Those of you who are seated, if you would rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, before we get underway, there's a couple of administrative matters that I need to bring to your attention. First off, the fire exit is located to your left. In the event of a fire, you will be notified by an announcement. If notified, please move in a calm and orderly fashion to the exit using either the north or the south doors. Do not use the elevator. And then get a safe distance away from the building. The meetings are being recorded by our secretary, Michelle, for the purpose of a record and preparation of minutes. So when you come to the microphone, please identify yourself each time you come to the podium and speak into the microphone. We will follow the items in the order that they appear on the agenda, extra copies of which are available at the table near the door. The way the procedure works is that the case will be called by Michelle and the applicant and their representatives will come to the podium, state their name, their address, and raise their right hands to be sworn. Applicants are sworn because they're the ones who are providing information that we might rely upon in making a determination. After they're sworn, then they will present their case. During their presentation of the case, members of the board may and probably will ask questions and engage in some discussion and interaction with the applicant. After that process has been concluded, we will then open the public hearing to three categories of speakers. The first people that will be called upon to speak are those who wish to speak in favor of the application. You may come up and speak to the podium, give your name and your address, and then you don't have to be sworn, and then tell us what you have to tell us about the application. Once all those who wish to speak in favor of the application have been heard from, we'll open the hearing to those who wish to speak in opposition to the application and we'll follow the same process. Line up as you come up, give your name and address, tell us what you have to tell us about the application, and then when you're done, we'll call on the next person. After all of the people who wish to speak in opposition to the application have been heard from, we will open the podium to the third category, which emerged about a year and a half ago, of people who aren't sure if they're in favor or opposed to it but want to talk to us about it anyway. So if you want to talk to us and you don't know what your position is, that's your chance to come up to the podium and tell us whatever you have to say. Once all the public input has been concluded, then the applicant will be given an opportunity or their representative to speak to us again to address anything that came up during the public input portion of the hearing. After that is concluded, then the case will be closed and we'll move on to the next case. Once we've completed all of the cases that are on the agenda, the board will take a recess of a duration that will be announced at that time depending upon what time it is. After we come back from that recess, the board will deliberate and make decisions on the cases that appear on the agenda in the order that they appear on the agenda and the applicant or their representative remain present. So if the first applicant on the agenda has left, we would pick up with case number two and continue down the agenda until we'd heard all the cases for which the applicants were still present. Then we would go back to case number one and continue down for those applicants who had already left. During this portion of the meeting, there is no more public input. So the public input portion is closed when each case is closed. You're welcome to stay and you can listen to the deliberations. You can go home and watch it on TV if you get the cable channel. If you want to know what the outcome of the case was and you don't stay and you don't watch it on TV after you get home, you can call the town hall tomorrow morning after nine o'clock and they'll be glad to tell you what the decision was with respect to each of the cases. So, having gone through all of that, oh, one other thing I did forget to mention. If you speak in favor of the application, you cannot speak in opposition to the application. If you, once you've spoken once, you, that's the chance that you have, you don't get a second chance. And if you've spoken in favor or against the application, you're not allowed to come up and talk to us during the "I'd like to talk to you about it" portion. So with that all said, we will call the first case.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First item on the agenda is case number ZB 1504-1, upon the matter of request by Amanda Playford for a special use permit to harbor up to four hens with chicken coop pursuant to section 235-70 of Town Code on premises 462 Crossfield Road in an R3 residential district.
Hi, I'm Amanda Playford and this is my husband, Adrien Playford, and we reside at 462 Crossfield Road.
If you'd raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay.
All righty, I do actually have additional letters of support from our neighbors. They do have 12 copies each. I'm not sure how we pass them out or...
You can start by handing them to Mr. Evans and he'll pass. We only need six up here. The other six you can distribute at the table. That'll take care of four of them.
If there's flip flops, they're alternate then.
All right.
Thank you.
Also, while you're doing that, I will mention that we did receive letters from Donald Hunter at 468 Crossfield Road, a letter from his realtor, Mr. Curry, and also a letter from Alana and Ray Brzinski at 454 Crossfield Road.
Okay, I would like to open with a little bit of background and my reasoning and thought process behind wanting the hens in our house. I have been, well, we have been looking for a more healthy alternative lifestyle, going organic, supporting local farmers, going to farmers markets, things like that. I personally have done a lot of research on things such as GMO foods, organics, what type of soils to be using. We actually plant our own vegetables and fruits and things like that in the backyard for our own use. And I actually started looking into chickens for personal egg usage, and that was about a year ago. We've done a lot of things within the past, I want to say year to two years, to get to this lifestyle. I don't know when the last time we had fast food was. We really do read labels, we're very conscious of what types of food we buy, things like that. Adding chickens into the mix and having whole organic, free-range chicken eggs daily is something that we would like to invest in, having it be a protein alternative rather than eating something like beef or chicken every single night. And also, we get to control what food they ingest, so we would feed them non-GMO foods. We actually found a provider within Canadaque who does sell actually locally grown and milled grains and foods for the chickens. So with this, we actually have quite a few resources that are close personal friends of ours who have chickens, who have their own, like, beehives, they have their own backyard gardens, things like that. So we've kind of relied on their experiences and how they raise their chickens and what they've done, what they've found successful, and what they wish they could have done differently. In all the packets, I believe all of you have received that there should be name, contact information, things like that. They're all aware that I have used their information to give to the board to review and contact if needed. I understand that some of our neighbors do have concerns with the chickens. We spoke with Ray as well, and we understand that his wife has some allergies to the birds. So we definitely want to make sure that once the coop is erected, we're going to be able to follow guidelines provided by our doctor. He didn't specify, he was, he didn't recall the distance in which she needs to be away from birds, but obviously we'd want to accommodate that and not have them butting right up against their house. You actually came to our property yesterday, so the corner lot maybe wouldn't be the best idea, but based on Donald's needs, based on Ray's needs, we'd be more than willing to be flexible with the placement of the coop. If they needed to be centralized in the center of our lot, whatever they need, we're more than okay with being flexible with. The coop itself would be completely sealed in. It would be sheet metal, so very tiny holes, sheet wire. That way, things can't get in, they can't get out, birds aren't going to be popping in there, anything like that. So it's just going to be the chickens and the coop in the run. It will be secure, they're not going to be popping over saying hello to any of our neighbors or flying around or anything like that. We have enclosed also blueprints that we would like to follow that are very similar to what we'd like. It's not going to look like a little wooden shack with, you know, like plywood walls. It's going to actually have siding and painted and be aesthetically pleasing, pleasing to anybody who might be looking at our yard. So with the actual raising of the chicks, we would like to get them sooner rather than later. Reason being is because we would like to raise them from babies, have them put in a brooder in our garage so it wouldn't be in the home and it wouldn't be outside. They would be protected from the elements, they'd have their heater lamps, their food, their water, things like that. Once of age, that'll probably be about 60 days, once they all have their feathers growing in nice and full, they could be transitioned into the coop. Reason why we would like to get them probably by end of May is we want them to be hardy enough to get through the winters. This year was especially frigid. The coop size that we have proposed should be adequate enough for the chicks and chickens to be able to heat it themselves without having artificial heating in there. From questions I've asked, from things I've read, it could actually pose a danger if there's any faulty wiring, if something's knocked loose by the hens. It could start a fire and ultimately kill them. So we'd like to keep it at least small enough for them to heat it themselves. We definitely understand again Donald's concerns, just because again, he's trying to sell his house. We would be willing to wait to erect the coop, give them a little bit more time to have their house shown without anything be erected in our yard, so it wouldn't be a burden to them or an eyesore, anything that they might feel. And then of course, after the chicks were of age to be moved outside, we would then erect it. Another idea that we had come up with is have, if Ray needs a certain distance away from his property line or his house, we would be willing to put something like an actual privacy fence panel at the end of the chicken run so that Donald from his backyard would not be able to look, see any chickens flying around or anything like that.
Do they fly?
Not very well.
Okay, I didn't think they did.
No, they kind of, they can get up, like, they can go on to roost if you've ever been inside a barn, they can get up to the rafters and pretty much sit there, that's about it.
Kind of wobbly, but they get there.
They're wobbly, yes. So the chicks that we have picked out, it's going to be a mixed flock. They have been proven to be friendly. Everything that I've read that they're not very flighty birds, so again, they're not going to be very noisy and distracting in the backyard, you shouldn't be hearing them squabble around, scratch or anything like that. And some of them are also very good egg layers, which again is ultimately what we're looking for, friendly egg layers. And speaking with Natalie Hall, actually she again has contact information in our packet. She has suggested Nature Berry Farms for the chicks. They sell dale chicks to several week-old chicks. Another place that she also relies on is Tractor Supply Company, so there's different locations around that we could look at. We wouldn't want to hatch our own, just a little too much work in it. We'd like to have successful births and live chicks. Let me see if I have anything else. Sorry, I lost my train of thought. Really what our main goal is, is just to incorporate again more organic, natural ways of getting things. I understand that. We can run over to Wegmans, it's a two-minute drive, but again, it's not the same as going out to your own backyard, picking your eggs up, throwing it in the water, boiling, and having it for breakfast. I know one thing that will probably be asked is what will be done with the waste of the chickens. I actually have a compost going right now. I do what's called garbage bin compost, so it's not an open pile, you're not going to see flies or animals or smelling any smells or anything like that. It's in a garbage can, sealed lid. We, I would expand it to if there's going to be chicken manure involved. There is a specific timeframe that you need to have it decompose and cultivate, heat up, kill all the bacteria, and actually get to a state that you can actually use it. It's kind of easy to identify, it looks very deep, rich brown, very easy to crumble, and it looks like soil. So at that point, I think it's approximately 90 days plus after, of course, it hits the right temperatures, breaks down, you can then use it for fertilizer. And again, that would come in handy for me because I grow our own vegetables along the property perimeters of our yard. If that's not pleasing, I understand some people are just not okay with having, you know, fecal matter laying around. Even if it's going to be in a garbage can, we could definitely contact Waste Management, who's our waste supplier, and see what they would suggest as well, if there's a special procedure in which we would have to get rid of the waste. I understand that also, when considering birds, I, even when I was younger, I thought they were very dirty things, but as long as their environments are kept clean, there should be no disease, bacterias, dirt buildup, mites, any insect infestations, and the hens also should be healthy. By simply just going in, cleaning out their crates, the coop, the run, daily just monitoring their food and water, making sure everything is clean, we're going to build our own feeders and waterers. It's all going to be off the ground, automatic, so there's not going to be a chance for the water feeders to actually get dirty. It'll be hanging in a bucket with, you can buy these metal nipples at something like Tractor Supply Company. Again, just clean water consistently, that's what they need. They need it every couple hours.
Got a question for you.
Yeah.
This is the map that you supplied, right?
Yes.
And it shows the, it says previous proposal.
Yes, so after we had a visit from Mr. Heineman, is it?
Heineman, yep.
Heineman. Yesterday, he brought to my attention that Donald's might not be okay with having the coop close to his property line, so that was previously where we wanted it, about 15 feet away from our property and 10 feet away from his. That would kind of line up with our back garage door, so we could go in and out easily in the wintertime. Another suggestion was moving it over by our patio corner on the blueprints and having it in the corner. That way, most of the coop will be blocked by our house, it actually comes out a little bit, so you really wouldn't be able to see it from his yard if that's really what he was concerned with.
So the point is, you're very sensitive to the location with regard to your neighbors' scene, what they, what they look at, what they hear, that type of thing.
Yes.
And so wherever it suits everybody best, that would be where you'd be willing to put the chicken coop, right?
Yep. I know we've changed our minds several times with, with the coop, and it was because they found out one portion at one point and then another issue that they had at a different point. So again, if neither of those positions is okay with neighbors, I would be willing to hear, hear suggestions, adjust. Again, we could have it smack dab in our property line and I would be more than okay with that, as long as that appeases them.
Now, you should know that we've had a lot of requests for chickens over the last few years, and sometimes we approve it and sometimes we don't. It all depends on a number of different reasons, one of which is what the neighbors think.
Yes.
And a lot of times, we've approved them with the condition that it be reviewed after a year or maybe even six months or something like that, so that if it was a real pain to the neighbors, they're not stuck with that forever. You know, it's, it's a reviewable thing. Sometimes people would think, oh, they're going to have chickens next door, there goes the neighborhood type of thing, we're going to have smells, we're going to have rodents, we're going to have this and that. And they may be right, it all depends on how it's taken care of. And that's why I think a review, you know, down the road is not, is not a bad idea.
Of course.
So that might, that might come up.
Well, we kind of came into this with an understanding there likely would be a review. It's just kind of something we anticipated.
Just to make note of Russ's consideration, we have reviewed a handful of them, or four of them I know so far, and so far, they've been coming back with good reviews, that they haven't been an issue. So hopefully, you know... We, we have however, asked for a medical clearance annually of those that we have re-approved. Am I correct when I say that? I think all of the cases that we have.
We're going to get an update on that later tonight.
Okay.
Oh, are you speaking with the chickens or with the neighbor's health or...
No, the chicken, the chickens...
No, 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 we're not asking the neighbors to get annual checkups, just the chickens.
Okay. Well, actually, East Ridge Animal Hospital, there is a specific vet there who does actually take birds, and that's right down the street, so we're in luck with that. So we can definitely take the birds anytime needed, suggested, when review comes around, anything like that. Again, we're, we're pretty flexible with anything that might be needed, requested, required. Again, this is something that we've looked into for quite some time. I have a very good understanding of how to handle these situations. If I'm lost, I have questions, I panic about something, all my friends are within driving distance, they would be more than willing to come over, hands-on, help me out, anything like that. And again, those are the ones who have chickens as well.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the board? All right. We'll open the podium to anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the application. Seeing none, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the application? Step right up to the podium, state your name and address, please, and speak into the microphone.
My name is Dan Schellhart. I live at 448 Crossfield Road, and I watch over my aunt Sylvia Zona. She has emphysema. I take over, watch over, she's so afraid to hear, not the rooster, she doesn't want to hear a rooster sound in the morning, she doesn't want to be awakened by roosters.
There's no application for a rooster?
Just for chickens?
Just for hens?
And then, my next-door neighbor, his wife, a friend of mine, he sent you the application. His wife is very allergic to them, and he asked me to support him also. That's Ray Sowalski-Satsinski, I don't know how he pronounces his last name.
Brzinski, he sent a letter, he and his wife.
Yeah, so they were supporting him because they're friends of ours, and he's, she's allergic to him. But there won't be any roosters?
No roosters.
Oh, I couldn't hear it very well back.
Okay, well, try and make sure everybody speaks louder.
Sir, what was your, what was the address that you sent?
Mine's at 448 Crossfield Road. The owner of it is Sylvia Zona, I'm her nephew.
We have a note from, we have a signed letter from Sylvia saying she's okay with it.
Oh, no, she told me, she got that lost up. She told me it's, to make, that's why I'm here.
Okay, she's got, it's, it looks like it's in her writing, it says, "It's okay with me at 448, hens are fine, Sylvia."
Okay, maybe she found out they don't have roosters, I don't know.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
She was so afraid they were going to have roosters, she told me in the beginning.
No, no roosters.
All right. No, that's all I'm just...
Okay, thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in opposition to the application?
Nice catch.
Is there anyone who'd like to come up to the podium and talk to us about chickens and hens in the town? Or specifically at 462 Crossfield? No one there? Okay. So what we will do is we will close the hearing with respect to that case.
Do you want to make a note of how many, and these letters?
Oh, thank you, yes. In the packet of letters that was handed up to us, there was one from Georgianne and Frank Arena at 2397 Culver Road indicating that they approve of the plan. There was Joseph Zona Rhoda from 461 Crossfield Road who said he's okay with it. There was a letter from Randy and Angela Netten at 173 Moncomp Drive in favor of the application. Ms. Sony, the gentleman's aunt, "It's okay by me, hens are fine." Then we had the letters that I referenced earlier from Mr. Hunter and Mr. Curry. And I believe, we also had the letter from Alana and Ray Brzinski, which asked for certain things to be taken into account in making the determination. And there was a letter from Linda Waters, and that was the extent of the additional materials, I believe.
And then there's a letter that was in the packet from?
Mr. Hunter and his, and his realtor, Mr. Curry, yes.
Yes.
All right, so we'll close the hearing with respect to that matter and move on to the next case.
Next item on the agenda is case number ZB 1504-2, upon the matter of request by Thomas Harkin for a special use permit to park and store commercial vehicles and equipment on a commercially, commercially zoned vacant lot pursuant to section 235-104.1C on premises 135 Point Pleasant Road in a C commercial district.
Hi, I'm Thomas Harkin, I live at 170 Bayside Drive.
If you could raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay.
And this is my wife, Leanne, too, I apologize for that.
That's all right.
Hi, I'm Leanne Harkin, also 170 Bayside Drive.
Before I start, I'd like to just pass around, I have 15 signed, a letter signed by 15 neighbors, every person that, every person this property has touched mine and, and in the surrounding I, I have a small tree company, and I would like to park the, my trucks and my trailers, equipment associated with tree work on the property. I have a, my residence backs right up to this property. It would save me a lot of time from going to other places where I store it now, because it is right behind my house. Just saying so, since I live right there, I will keep it, I'll keep it looking good. I would like to put flowers, shrubs, trees around it to keep the aesthetics up.
Do you have any pictures of the equipment, the trailers and trucks that you're going to leave?
I do not.
Are they tractor trailers, are they pickup trucks, are they stakebodies?
I have two trucks now, one, one's a pickup truck, the other one is a six-wheeler. It's, we call it a chip truck in the business. And then I have a chipper, a couple of stump grinders, and a trailer.
Is this the same property, did you recently purchase this property?
I, I did.
So this is the same property we looked at over a year ago that wanted a couple apartments and some storage for boats underneath, right?
That is correct.
And did you recently purchase the house behind it? Because I thought a lady owned that house.
Um, different house, next door to that one. I purchased it in '07.
Okay, so you're not the very end house, you're the one?
I'm the center one.
Okay, all right, very good.
Just so the record's clear, I have signatures on a page saying that they're in favor of allowing the variance. Let me point out, and this also applies to the previous case, this is not an application for a variance. This is an application for a special use permit.
For a special use permit, I apologize for the...
It's quite all right, but it's important that people understand the difference. A variance seeks permission to vary the terms of the Town Code with respect to either the use or the development of property. The special use permit, there's already been a determination that this use is compatible with the neighborhood and the town. What we're asked to do is determine what conditions, if any, need to be imposed in order to make it fit with the least possible inconvenience and changes in the neighborhood. Or to make a determination that despite the fact that the use is compatible with the town, that it's just not going to work on that particular property. So that's the special use permit. We're, we're not varying anything. Sometimes people confuse that and ask us to turn things down because they don't agree with the concept, but the concept isn't in front of us, just the implementation.
Gotcha.
And we have signatures from the people at 160, two people at 169 Bayside Drive, 164 Bayside Drive, 126 Point Pleasant Road, 317 Zuber Road, 20 Lodge Drive, 339 Pert 164 Bayside Drive, 126 Point Pleasant Road, 317 Zubba Road, 20 Lodge Drive, 339 Pert, 327 Pert, 321 Pert, 178 Bayside, 175 Bayside, 174 or 94 Aragon, 200 Aragon, 177 Point Pleasant, and another one from 169 Bayside, Bayside Drive. And you submitted these photographs?
I have.
The fence that you wanna?
The fence, the one that's circled, is the one that I'd like to put in the front of it.
Okay.
It's surrounded by fence on three sides. I would like to place one in the, on the front as well, with a gate, just to keep, and I picked that one because it's the same one that goes along the highway now.
Okay.
So it just, it would blend in.
Okay, all right.
Actually, I'm kinda glad that you're here, because I, I used to live on Adrian Road, and I go by it all the time. I taught at Duran Eastman, Blunder the Firehouse, I mean, that thing has been there for a variety of reasons in the past, none of which were very attractive.
I would agree.
And the gentleman wanted to build all that stuff on it, it was really too much for that little piece of land.
I, yeah.
So I used to wonder, what would be a good way to use that? I mean, heaven forbid that we have a vacant lot in town, which actually, it looks quite nice the way it is, but I can understand why you would wanna do it. When I went by today and saw the fencing, I thought, yeah, this, this could work. I think the biggest concern, though, is the vehicles themselves. We had one where they wanted to park a semi-cab on Hartsdale Road, and it was gonna be totally incongruent with the neighborhood.
Gotcha.
But I don't think that's what you're talking about. You're talking about a couple of trucks, they're not huge.
They're not huge. In my line of work, if they're that big, they're worthless.
Okay.
It can't be any more than a medium duty, heavy duty is, is too big.
So with the fence closed and so forth, they're gonna be pretty much out of sight, anyway.
That's my thought, yes.
Any, any provisions for security there that's...
Um, I would like to put some lighting up and some cameras, to, just for that reason, yes.
Does that affect anything?
Just, just as a point of clarification, the site improvements that he might propose for the location would go before the planning board for their review because of the, it's a zone C commercial.
Yeah.
So any alterations of fencing, lighting, things like that, would be reviewed by the planning board.
Doesn't change the variance request at all. I'm sorry, the specialties permit.
If we were to approve this restricting the trucks, not to have tractor-trailer trucks?
That would be fine by me.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments from any members of the board?
I have just one on timing. What sort of time factors would you expect these equipment to be coming in and out of the neighborhood?
The time of day?
Time of day, yes.
Would probably leaving, I wanna say 7:30, 8 o'clock in the morning, and then coming back in the afternoon, and that could range between 3:30 and 5:00 generally.
So if we had a cutoff at 6:00, that would be acceptable?
Yeah, it would.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Anything else? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Step right up. Don't be shy, come right up when we start.
My name's Andy Winter, I live at 165 Bayside, and I think it'd be nice to have, see something finally go in that corner, you know, with some small trees or whatever to start out, landscaping, another fence. I think it would look good.
That was a five, not a nine?
Oh, yes.
Okay, I misread the five for a nine, so there was only one from 169 Bayside. All right.
That's it, thanks.
Anyone else wish to speak in favor of this application? Anyone like to speak in opposition to the application? Anyone like to come up and talk to us about it? We'll close the hearing with respect to that matter, then move on to the next item on the agenda.
Next item on the agenda is case number ZB 1504-3. Upon the metta request by Flom Management Company acting as agent for One Medley Center Parkway for an area variance to attach two banner signs on building exceeding maximum number of signs and maximum allowable square footage on premises One Medley Center Parkway in a TRR Tourism and Resort Redevelopment District.
Hi, my name is Scott Burdette, I'm with Flom Management Company, I'm a vice president with Flom.
If you could raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And if you could also give us your address, please.
Home address, business address?
Business address is fine.
400 Andrews Street, Suite 500, Rochester 14604. Here to request an area variance in terms of development signage to go on the former Macy's building at Medley Center. The current town code limits a single development sign not to exceed 50 square feet. Given the sheer size of the building and distance from the major roadways, we're looking for some flexibility to increase that to roughly 200 square feet for a banner fronting 104, and a second banner fronting Ridge Road.
And the banner that was, or at least the art file that was supplied with the applications calls for, for lease up to 125,000 square feet, Flom Management and the phone number?
Yep.
And the email address?
Yep, it's, it'll be consistent with that. We might tweak the font or text a little bit, but yeah, that's usually pretty standard.
Is that, are you leasing for that whole building, or I was under the impression part of it was already leased?
The Macy's building, which is owned separate from the mall, is vacant. It's two stories, 62,500 on two stories, so 125,000 square feet total.
So the, because there was rumor in the news that there was a, a business that the Floms had already secured a lease for that building, or part of it, anyway?
Not at this point.
No? Okay.
Hopefully soon.
Okay, so you brought up the fact that this is a separate building from the mall.
It's a separate tax parcel, it has different ownership, correct?
Different ownership, so now it's owned by Flom.
It's owned by One Medley Center LLC, it's a related entity.
Okay, so you can, you can treat it like a separate piece of property, then, from the rest of the mall, right? Not that you would want to particularly...
To some extent, I mean, yeah, there's some complicated reciprocal easement agreements and things like that. It's obviously tied into some of the major mall systems, but yeah, for the most part.
You're talking about parking and drive-through and...
Yeah, I mean, there's, you know, mechanical systems, we're running on water, electrical, all that is still, you know, tied into the larger property in a whole.
Gotcha.
But yeah, relatively speaking terms, it could be separated.
I'm already in favor of this, before we even vote, because I think something happening positively at the mall, and adjoining buildings, to me is very exciting for this town. And personally, I will tell you that whatever I can do as a member of this board to promote that, I am willing.
I appreciate that.
I'm glad this came in.
Rent the property.
Thomas music's looking to grow.
Well, next time the town is expanding any municipal offices, just remember we have 125,000 square feet over there.
And any other questions or comments from the board?
Yeah, how close are you to getting someone to move into this property? Because I'm concerned, because I'm, I did, I do follow this closely, and I do remember that when the property was purchased, it was purchased with a development in mind, so that you guys were already on second base, as opposed to just coming up to bat. So I'll just kinda clarify where that is. I understand that the purpose of the sign is to...
To attract a tenant.
Attract attention.
To attract, yeah, to bring attention to the property, to cultivate leads with the final goal of securing a tenant for the entire building or a large portion of the building.
Please correct me if I'm wrong, what else is being done to attract attention? Is, is the sign the primary reason, or is this the sixth part of a 10-part plan?
Yeah, it's, it's, you know, the signage is certainly a great asset, you know, given the vehicle traffic counts on 104 and Ridge Road, it's certainly not the end-all, be-all of our, our marketing campaign. There aren't a lot of people necessarily driving down the road that are gonna, kinda fall on 125,000 square foot building that might work for them, but certainly just having it out there and more people talking about it, you know, creates opportunities. We've, you know, continued to talk to all sorts of businesses and companies. We, I wish we could've said that we had a tenant in our back pocket going in and purchasing the building, that that's not the case. You know, we're open to a variety of uses and companies, but, you know, there's nothing, nothing final at this point.
And the town's very excited about the prospect of, we obviously have a local owner now. You know, Flom is a well-known local entity with a proven track record of great projects, so it's a, it's one small step, the sign's one small step in, probably, I don't know the last time Medley Center was probably for any board, so any step, you know, that's moving us in the direction towards bringing permanent local tenants there is a good one. So we're supportive of this application on the town side.
At this particular time, the Flom has just purchased the one section of the building, the Macy's section?
Yes, the Macy's building, correct.
Okay, and if it's a positive outcome, are they planning on doing more?
Here's the hope. Not gonna comment on that.
Start with the sign.
Obviously, there's a lot of attention and interest to the property. I would say if we're able to fill and secure 125,000 square foot building and it's successful for everyone, I don't see why we wouldn't at least consider other options.
Not that there's pressure here.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this application? Anyone wish to speak in opposition to this application? Anyone like to come up and talk to us about it? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing with respect to that matter, move on to the next case on the agenda.
Next item on the agenda is case number ZB 1504-4. Upon the metta request by Lantac acting as agent for Smettle Holdings LLC for area variances to construct 54 row house units with less than required side setbacks and exceeding maximum allowable density on premises 160 Dunsborough Road in an R1 residential district.
Good evening, Mr. Chair.
Good evening.
Proceed. I'm Alan Knopf, do you want me to go ahead or no?
Yes.
Okay. I'm Alan Knopf from Knopf Shaw, we're attorneys for the applicant Smettle Holdings. I'm here tonight with the consultant, John Chiraba from Lantac, and Angelo Lichardello from Smettle is, is in the second row here tonight. As you recall, we were here in December on an application for a use variance for, I believe it was 74 units. We had, had a meeting with neighbors and presented our application. I'll give you a little background as how we got to where we're at.
The, well, before you get into that, when you were here in December?
Yes.
We ended up hearing a lot about the application, and then we referred it to the planning board to be lead agency for secret purposes. It seems to me, in looking over your application, that we're likely to do the same thing tonight.
I did think of that, but, but...
And we have a memo from the conservation board that recommends that we table the application and forward it to the planning board for a secret determination.
Okay.
So, my thinking is that we're probably not going to actually get to, like we didn't in December, actually determining whether or not we're gonna grant any variances and the things that you're seeking in the application. So, what I'd ask is that if you could limit what you're about to talk about to why we shouldn't refer this to the planning board for a secret determination, that might save us all a lot of discussion about things that aren't going to be relevant to what we're doing tonight.
Well, just on that particular issue, and I'm sure Ms. Champion can chime in and give you her opinion, but this is an unlisted action, so you are not required to do coordinated review, so the zoning board, we would ask to make its own determination of significance, but as you know, you do have the option of doing coordinated review and asking another agency like the planning board to be the lead.
And, and it seems, seems to me that the same reasons that we came to that conclusion in December are still present with respect to this application.
Okay. Well, be that as it may...
I think that was seven votes in favor and no opposed.
Right, right. Well, there was a use variance application, this is a smaller project, but, Mr. Chairman, I would ask that we at least be given an opportunity to give a brief presentation on the, on the application.
So I was asking, brief is what I was getting at.
Well, the game doesn't start till like 9:15.
It has nothing to do with the game, it's actually 9:18, but...
Oh, 9:18. The, I just wanted to give a little background so you know where we, how we got to where we're at. And, and what we were asking for tonight, and I understand you won't be acting on it tonight, is, is a couple of area variances. The main one would be the density from allowed 38 to 54, which, you know, is maybe upping it by 30% or depending how you count it, or 45%. The, originally, and then we're also asking for a variance on the side setbacks, to have some zero setbacks. That's something that the planning board could also address through cluster, so that may be something that's deferred to the planning board, but since we were coming in front of this board first, we thought, out of respect to this board, we would present you with, with that issue, we understand if that may be deferred to the planning board. So the main issue before the board is, is the density. Originally, when we came here, we were asking for a use variance to put 74 units on one lot. We went, and we also asked for an interpretation. The board did not agree with our interpretation, but out of that rose a, an interpretation that two, or that a duplex was allowed on a lot in the zone. And through the site capacity worksheet, it was determined that we could do 36 lots, therefore, there could be 76 units in 38 duplexes, and there's 38 times two.
I should just point out real quick, though, the town board has taken action to clarify the code as it's been administered in the town for the last, its existence, so that we're utilizing the way that that code reads for the, just so the board doesn't get confused.
Have they already made their interpretation?
Well, yeah, Mr. Weatherby stole my thunder, I was about to get to that. So, based on the interpretation that we received, that we could do 38 duplexes or 76 units total, Smettle went ahead and purchased the property. Based on that interpretation, invested its money in the property because it, even though doing 38 lots was not as preferable to having one lot because of the implications for real property tax, with each lot being separately assessed, they went ahead and purchased based upon, in reliance upon, the interpretation. Since then, the, the town, in response to the interpretation, amended the code and has said that they're not gonna allow duplexes in this zone on single lots, effectively reducing the allowed density of the 76 upon which we relied upon when my client purchased the property down to 38. So that's sort of, that's where we were at. We, we had gone in front of the planning board, we're seeking a, you know, with a proposal, seeking input from the planning board. They had some questions, and the town staff had some questions that we did address related to things like consistency with the comprehensive plan and all. Since the code was amended, or in the process...
But to clarify one thing, though, because I don't want this to get lost, there is nowhere in town where it's been administered the way that that was, and I, and kudos to finding the, the misprint slash loophole, but there is nowhere in town that you can point to where there is a, the zoning code has been administered the way that the applicant was requesting. So it's not as if this is a change in the way that the zoning code's been administered over the... over the course of the last twenty-five years, just to make sure we're clear about that.
But we did receive an interpretation that our interpretation was correct, and our client bought the property in reliance on that. I understand that no one may have seen the way the, it may be in the past, people didn't properly read the code or didn't quite comprehend it. It is a little confusing, but that was how the code was interpreted and we went ahead. So, you know, we, that's a position our client was put in. He went ahead and purchased the property. Now he wants to try to at least make something of the development. Doing thirty-eight just is not going to work. He could do a conventional development of thirty-eight separate conventional single-family homes, as we had indicated earlier, that would not be cost-effective because of the cost of development would be a lot more, and it would be much worse from an environmental standpoint because, I mean, it would cause some real environmental issues because we would be on the, you know, the edge of the, of the steep slope. We would eliminate the buffer to the single-family homes and all that. So by clustering, we avoid any environmental impacts of any consequence because we're able to put a buffer from the single-family homes. Across the street is a school, there's apartments across Dunsmore, so the only single-family homes, the neighborhood to the north, we would be able to buffer if we do not do detached single-family homes in a conventional layout. So by, by effectively clustering, we're able to avoid the environmental impact. So that's why we're, we're here.
But can I ask Mr. Weatherby a question?
Sure.
And not to interrupt, but the town board has determined that you could build a duplex.
No, sir. No, sir. So the way that the code has always been administered is in R1 was single-family homes. If you wanted to do something other than that, you'd need some sort of variance for zero lot lines or, you know, or you'd need a setback, something, you know, if you wanted to build something like this, you wouldn't be able to do it. The language of the code had some, there's some clarification that needed to make sure that the language was consistent with the administration, which is what has been always understood here for a number of decades. So the town board just really clarified the language so that the language was consistent with the administration of the code.
All right, so the way I'm reading my paper here, it says it's allowed thirty-eight units. Are those thirty-eight units under one, under how many roofs?
If you were to go out and build a traditional, what you'd think in the sense, traditional residential subdivision of thirty-eight units.
Thirty-eight houses, separate.
Yes, thirty-eight individual, single-family homes.
Right.
That's what's the allowed, that's the allowed use.
So a duplex is not allowed, multifamily is what they're requesting is not allowed.
No.
In row housing, it's a multifamily, one-unit building.
What we're requesting is thirty-eight single-family home, lots on thirty-eight separate lots, the row house or multifamily.
But they're, excuse me for interrupting, but they're connected, so it's gonna look like a row house.
Right, that's a zero setback. It may look like it, but it is not because they're single lots, so they're gonna be assessed separately, which is a big difference.
Single lots with no setback because they're built together.
Correct.
Right.
Correct.
Okay, so it's a, okay.
Because multifamily is when you have more than one unit on a lot, and the tax assessment is quite different.
So you're planning on breaking up these lots, making them separate?
Right.
Even though they're gonna look like...
And that's per, the interpretation will be settled back in December was that they have to be on separate lots.
A single, separate lot.
Right. And so they all could be, they all can be sold individually.
So the, the number of thirty-eight was determined by the amount of space available.
In that buildable area, yeah.
In that buildable area, and that was determined by the town board or by our typical...
No, no.
By our zoning courts?
By the, yes. That's through the site capacity worksheet.
Okay, so, all right, so...
I think everybody agrees pretty much.
And the thirty-eight doesn't work for your project?
Right, right. Because of the infrastructure costs and all, in part of it, he went into it, I guess the point is the fairness, he went into this thinking he could do seventy-six because that's what the town said. So he invested his money, bought the property, thinking the seventy-six was legal because it was, and, and because it was an interpretation from the town that said that.
I would ask that the members of the audience, hold your comments. You'll be given an opportunity to come to the podium and speak later on, but it's, with the background of buzzing coming from the audience, it's difficult for us up here because we hear that under what the applicant is saying. So if you could hold your comments until we give you an opportunity to come up and speak.
In any event, I was hoping Mr. Chiraba could give you a little presentation on what the layout would be, so you know what, so you better understand what, instead of getting, going in circles here on the legal history, I think you understand what, what...
And I just have one, one clarifying point. On the seventy-six, the seventy-six homes that were the basis of the interpretation, it was, the interpretation was on the use of attached versus detached, uh, single-family dwellings. I don't know if the town ever got to the point with the site capacity worksheet of, as far as the density of ever saying that seventy-six homes would fit.
It never got to this, we've never gotten to this point, but I think there was, the general numbers were what, what they are now.
So I don't know from, from a density standpoint if that's really changed since your initial application. It was just more whether or not detached or versus attached, single-family residences were permitted.
No, I think, I mean, I think, I don't think anybody's disagreeing that the site capacity worksheet says there could be thirty-eight lots, and the interpretation is you could have a duplex on each lot. You never, I don't know if you ever said you could have seventy-six, but then you, then the law, the laws changed, so it couldn't, we couldn't do that now without a variance.
Because of the missing two words in the, in the code, the way it was written, it made it so that if you were reading the code, you could make the argument, which, which is why there was a reason to clarify. The language is consistent with the administration, that is the main point. The way it's been administered, this is consistent. The language is consistent with that now. A reading of the code more closely in the prior iterations could have shown that you, you could say that there was duplexes would be allowed. That is why there's a need to make sure the language, again, is consistent with the administration of the code.
Right. But from a density perspective, without having gone through the exercise of the site capacity worksheet, there's no way of saying, to Alan's point, that seventy-six homes would have been permitted under the prior interpretation that that's true. It still may have been closer to the number that we have now.
Well, I think legally, with your interpretation, duplexes, a duplex is allowed on one lot and there's thirty-eight lots.
No, I understand, but it's a lot coverage issue with the density, it's not just the number.
That's true, too.
Well, there'd be other, there's other issues you gotta look at.
So if they're twice the size, then, then you wouldn't necessarily still need to be still able to have seventy-six of them because they're twice the size.
We didn't propose that because we couldn't fit seventy-six necessarily.
It's, it's an interesting issue, but I would circle back to what I said at the outset. Thank you.
Just so we're clear that we didn't go from seventy-six permitted to...
Can Mr. Chiraba just show you a little bit of a wild...
He's gonna give us a little demonstration, right?
Sure.
All right.
I'll be quick. So just to recap, we're basically looking, the site capacity worksheet said thirty-eight lots. We're asking for sixteen more, for a total of fifteen. So that's the density issue. And I know we're throwing a lot of terms around here...
For a total of fifty-four, right?
Fifty-four lots. I know we're throwing a lot of terms around here that this board is not used to, clustering, site capacity worksheet, and we're looking to get to the planning board. We want to make an application, but any, but we need approval from this board in order to say we're going over the thirty-eight units. If I can just speak, I don't know if the board's familiar with clustering. If the site capacity worksheet says thirty-eight units, we can do thirty-eight units all over the project, or we can do thirty-eight units in a quarter of the area. And that's really what we're doing. We're using the cluster philosophy that the planning board is normally interprets and works with us on, but we're showing to you first because we're saying, hey, we're going over the thirty-eight units. So that's why we're here tonight, along with the zero setback for the common wall, which is another issue that'll be addressed by the, by the planning board. And what we've done on the plan, if you look at it briefly, is what, what clustering is, is we try to find a benefit to the town and the public for giving clustering, for shrinking this development, and what are those, what are those benefits? Well, it's open space. If you look at our plan, we only have about nine acres of, well, we have nine acres of land open and untouched. We only have one point seven acres of land that's building, building area, which puts it at around fourteen percent. So there's only fourteen percent of this area that's built on, which is less than what the code requires for R1, which is twenty-five percent. So we've, so that's a benefit, you have more open space. Then you try to eliminate public utilities, dedicated roads. This is a private road configuration, so the town's not gonna be plowing this road, salting this road, maintaining this road. We also look for other amenities like walks and things like that, so we've added sidewalks to this plan. We've added a trail to this plan, so we've tried to take things that would, that would make it a benefit, to get the units we want, shrink the project down, and provide buffering. Buffering is an important thing. The people on Kennedy Circle, which I'm sure the majority are here, are, don't want this probably in their backyard, but the closest building to their property line is ninety-two feet away. We also are gonna incorporate a thirty-foot conservation easement over the existing trees that are there right now, today, to be managed by the town, so we're trying to buffer this. We don't have to do that with conventional layout. The rear setback for a conventional layout's only thirty feet, so if we do the standard subdivision that we all think we want there, we're gonna wipe out every tree within thirty feet of their back property line. That's, that's what you're looking at. This, this protects the buffer, protects some of those open areas, protects the wildlife. So clustering is a tool that we use a lot to try to, to make a better project. We're not just trying to, you know, build an apartment project here that doesn't work. These are private lots, yes, they are owned by one person, but they're private metered, private lots, private taxes. The other thing I want to point out that's very important is my applicant tonight has no problem signing a deed restriction to make this a fifty-five or older project. So we're not asking for rezoning and to rezone the senior, but we incorporate the future plans that this is fifty-five years or older to minimize impact to the schools. But this is a product, a plan that my client has produced other places in Monroe County. People naturally gravitate to it that are fifty-five and older, and if you look at the preservation of open space and things like that, we need the planning board to work with us. But it's hard for us to go to the planning board with a density that's over, that's not allowed. So we just can't present to them and them say, well, why are you here? The zoning board's gotta give you relief. So although we, we might walk out of here with a no decision, we're hoping that some feedback from this board may shun some positive light on this for going beyond the thirty-eight unit density. So that's a quick, as quick as I can do it.
Can I ask, I'm sorry, go ahead, sir.
This map is a good map, right?
That's a reduced-sized map of this one.
Okay.
Yep.
So it means something, that's what I'm getting at.
Oh, yes, yep.
Now, are these gray areas driveways?
That go north and south to the building. Each unit has its own garage.
Now, I counted the number of driveways, assuming that would mean the number of houses, too. And on one side, I came up with sixteen, on the other was eleven, so I'm looking at twenty-seven, and it doesn't get, come close to the fifty-four that you were talking about. So I'm not interpreting, I'm not interpreting this right.
Each driveway goes to two garages.
Yeah, there's, there's a common driveway to each garage, so these are eight-unit buildings, a majority of them, there are a couple six-unit buildings, that's how we arrived to the...
Clustered driveways, too?
Yep, they'll have common driveways.
Okay.
Yep.
And on the, on the map, that I just wanted to point out, too, and John, maybe you can explain, just on the lot coverage, if you were to look at it in the zoning notes, it says the code's twenty-five percent, it says proposed thirty-six, can you just explain what that is on there?
So, that's a good point, Nick. Well, so when I looked at this project, the project that you mapped, that you see in reduced form, doesn't show lot lines. Mr. Knopf stated that there's gonna be a lot lines on here, I'm stating that there're gonna be lot lines on, so individual lots. If you take the smallest lot that we're showing, which is gonna be in the common wall interior on these eight units, that lot size is twenty-one foot wide by a hundred and twenty-one foot deep, which, which gives you an area of about twenty-four hundred square feet, lot area. When you use the math of the twenty-four hundred square feet with the building footprint that we're showing you, we're roughly at that thirty-six percent lot coverage for that tiny little lot. But if you look holistically at the project, as I stated before, you have twelve point six nine acres, and we have one point seven of that as building. That gives you an area of only thirteen percent lot coverage, which is just about fifty percent of code. So I don't know if that clarifies it. So part of the code that we're showing you is if that, that individual lot, if this gets approved, is gonna be over, but due to the nature of clustering, where we're taking these lots and shrinking them, it's only natural that the percent of impervious coverage is gonna go up.
Is there, Mr. Weatherby, is there a lot width that is allowed right now in the town?
Yes, I think what the applicant is saying, correct if I'm wrong, is you, you would want those waived through the planning board process, and that's why, is that the reason you're not going for them?
The lot width for R1 is eighty by one-twenty.
Right.
And instead of doing conventional subdivision of thirty-eight lots that way, we're gonna say, we're gonna leave all this open space and we're gonna shrink these into these buildings. And that's how we get with these somewhat...
Just twenty-one feet wide seems awful narrow.
Yeah, it's a, it's a product that works. If you look at these buildings, they're, they're two ranch units on the end, and then two up and, or four up and down units in the middle, and that's, it, it, it works for the marketing, you know, some people want smaller, some people are by themselves, especially with this age group, so it does feed and fulfill a need.
It is, it is something that he's definitely gonna do a fifty-five or older, or it's a consideration?
I spoke to him tonight, it's a concern of his. If he's looked at his project he's building now in Webster and those numbers, he's not fully built out yet, but he's finding that it's ninety percent already. So we're looking to ways to work with the town. We understand that the burden to the school is a significant issue, and so, you know, he's taking it kinda, you know, you know, to make, to put that deed restriction in place. I don't know what point we have to do that, but we're willing to do that.
And we also understand the town has indicated they would like to see more housing for seniors and all.
Yep.
Well, I think for the neighbors that live on the next street over, I think their concern is the quiet neighborhood.
Yep.
In the event the project were to go through, it might be quieter for them.
I think so. And I, and I think this project, if you take the fifty-five away, even this project in its nature would be quiet, more quiet than a conventional layout of thirty-eight units. I think, you know, we have a lot of generations of plans, and I could just kinda skim one, you know, this, this would be a conventional layout for the road going down through with houses similar in size to Kennedy Circle, and you can see how that would impact these houses. So you'd have houses backing up to, I know it's kind of, so we've kinda gone through that exercise, trying to find ways to get a product that, that my client wants and that'll work well in the neighborhood. So we've done a lot of, a lot of work. We've, I know you, we were here late last year, we're looking forward to making an application to the planning board, full application with full design drawings, but after leaving here tonight, I'm gonna get my marching orders from my client, and he's gonna obviously spend some money, I know it's not a concern of this board, with me, to go forward, but we're hoping that when we have to come back to this board, you agree with our, with our plan and, and after, and it, and we have to work with the planning board. So it's not to say that fifty-four units, and I think Ms. Champion was speaking to that, that although we're saying fifty-four, planning board might trim us down to fifty, we don't know. We still have to go through the exercises of other things, EPOD plan, all the normal procedures through the planning process.
Why doesn't the road connect to Dunsmore Road at the south end?
That was some feedback that we got, we felt from the school, they didn't want it to have any more impact, so with a development like that, we put a hammerhead there to minimize a second curb cut, but we're gonna work with the fire marshal on that and see if that's amenable to him. We could just as easily go out to Dunsmore.
I think for the fifty-five and older crowd, it might be, of which I'm a part, by the way, it might be easier to have it come straight through.
I should point out, too, that we did go through the expensive traffic study based on our original plans, we have those numbers to provide to this board or the planning board, so we, they did find that this project, and this was done with numbers at around sixty-four units, had no impact on the, on the traffic pattern from Dunsmore Road.
All right, I'll, excuse me, I asked before that you keep your comments to yourself. You want a chance to come up here and address the board at the podium? We'll give you that opportunity, but that kind of, first, we don't need. Thank you.
John, when we looked at this last year, you were talking rentals. Are these still rentals, or for sale, or a mix?
They're, they're gonna be owned by one person, but they are individual tax parcels. So my client's gonna own all those lots, pay taxes on all those individual lots, and, and lease them out. At some point, if he wanted to sell a unit, he could, because it is its own parcel, it's own, it's metered by itself, so that opportunity is there.
Okay. And is there a rental range that you have determined already?
I have to take it from memory, and I, and I'm, and I'm trying to think somewhere between twelve and fifteen hundred dollars a month, and I don't know if, if my, if that's right.
Yeah, so is that?
Yes, so twelve to fifteen hundred dollars a month for these units.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the board? All right, we will open it up for those who wish to speak in favor of the application. And again, I will point out to you that when this matter was here in December, we made no decisions, we referred this matter to the planning board. There's five of us tonight, there were seven of us then. I'm not anticipating that there's really going to be a whole lot of difference, but...
I'm not anticipating that there's really going to be a whole lot of difference, but we'll be glad to hear from anyone who'd like to come up and speak, so if there's anyone here who wants to speak in favor of the application.
Just to be clear, the ref, the referral to the planning board was for them to be lead agency for the purpose of performing seeker, just so, yes.
Correct, which the Conservation Board is recommending that we still do. Anyone wish to speak in opposition to the application? Line up? In the aisle way?
Is Mr. Bettinger coming up?
Was he coming up to speak in favor?
Yes.
All right, then he goes first, but I didn't see him.
He's a little slow.
That's all right.
Yeah, my name is Dan-
Hold on, I need the opposition to step back. Mr. Bettinger wants to speak in favor of the application.
Well, when you get to be ninety-four years old, you don't move so fast, you know.
It's quite all right, sir.
Yeah, I'm still hanging in there.
There you go.
Um, I was born in Aranacoit in nineteen-twenty-one on Party Road, and moved to Densmore Road when I got married and, uh, uh, lived there the rest of my time. Um, I, I think this is a, a good use for the par, uh, the parcel. Uh, over the years, I've had a number of, of persons come along wanting to buy a lot, and, uh, a lot would not work out in this eleven-and-a-half acre parcel because of the length of the, uh, Densmore Road versus the depth of the land, and, uh, so, uh, I didn't have any reason to want to sell to an individual for, on that basis. So in the meantime, the, the, the local person came forward and has made an offer, I've accepted, uh, and, uh, I, I like the arrangement, and I, I, I think the, uh, property will, uh, uh, improve, uh, with, with the development of these individual sites. Uh, the people on, uh, Kennedy Circle has been opposed because, of course, they want this property to be forever wild, but who's paying the taxes? Me, I'm paying the taxes on, uh, actually sixteen acres of land, including my home, and, uh, therefore, uh, let them, uh, pay the taxes. Now, in this fashion, um, excuse me, um, well, I guess that's it.
All right, thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in favor of the application? Seeing none, we can start the, moving the line forward. I think there was another gentleman, though, who was first. He sat down.
Again, my name is Dan Chilhart, I live on the other side of Culver Road, I use that area a lot. I, I, they just put a, a school there, it's just a skinny little road, it's a busy street on Orange Street, it's busy to get on the expressway. I can't imagine building another apartments or anything, and we're talking about a thirty-eight or four, fifty-four individual houses going to build all at once and sell them individually, or they're going to build them as you need them, or? I, I don't understand what he, he's going, if you give them, if you give them the fifty-four, does that mean he's going to put fifty-four of them in there right now and then start selling, or, or does he sell them if they build them? Well, neither, that really matters, but what really bothers me is that the neighborhood and the, the traffic, they just put a bus, I just put a school there.
Okay.
That's what I'm opposed to.
All right, thank you, sir. Next.
Good evening, I'm Dave Gambino, I live at twenty-five Twin Road, uh, one-four-six-oh-nine. My father originally built our home there fifty-eight years ago, and I played on many of the lots that are now occupied, uh, in Aranacoit. Um, also, from what I understand, for the builder, that Macy's is available for condos. Um, and I would also hope that he would move to Kennedy Circle so he could look on the beautiful site. Um, what I'd like to say, there are many rentals that are abundant in our town, many rentals. Now, these proposed rentals are going to be twelve to fifteen hundred in rent, when basically many of our homes around there run anywhere from eighty-five thousand to a hundred and twenty thousand. Um, I, uh, when you invest hundreds of thousands of dollars, of dollars, what happens if it doesn't get rented? Let me put that to you. And as far as traffic, uh, I have seen with the building of the school, with trying to pull out with Newport Highlands, that traffic is increased. Now, are we going to get to a point where we're going to have to put traffic lights on the corner of Densmore, Wall Road, Whitlock, and Heberly? Or speed bumps? It's going to increase traffic coming down those streets. Now, again, I encourage, let's look at what is already for rent. Let's fill those before we take any more of the green space and become, uh, let's say, like Greece. And please, the neighbors on Kennedy Circle, of which I played in that area, they don't want to look out into that. So I thank you for your time, and just your consideration as concerned homeowners, that we have enough, let's fill the existing rentals, and maybe Bentley Center. Thank you.
Next.
Hi, good evening, my name is Sherry Everchad, and I reside at ninety-five Kennedy Circle. I am here tonight speaking on behalf of over thirty residents of Aranacoit. My comments are, um, the one-sixty Densmore Road application is for a commercial apartment row house project. The intent of the application is to obtain enough variances so the single-family zoning will be changed to allow commercial residential rentals. It's an apartment project veiled under the guise of row houses. Based on the document, documents obtained from the Town Development Office, the applicant has failed to comply with application requirements in many areas, and has failed to comply with the Town Code Section two-thirty-five forty-seven, application review site capacity worksheet as it pertains to Section two-thirty-five fifty-two EPOD steep slopes. What is clear from the letter of intent and the instrument survey map is the zoning board must disapprove the site capacity worksheet. The worksheet submitted with the March sixth application does not comply with Town Code. EPOD requirement, the instrument survey map must show the existing EPOD steep slope areas, and the Land Tech sketch does not accurately depict the steep slope EPOD as defined by Town Code. The site capacity worksheet defines the steep slopes thirty percent and over and is two-point-three-one acres. Applicant has omitted any documentation that the stated two-point-three-one area include the transition zone as required. Town Code, Section two-thirty-five fifty-two EPOD two, steep slopes protection district. The following additional areas shall also be considered with the steep slope definition. A transition zone at the top of the slope defined as that area containing soil classes is defined in the Monroe County Soil Survey, with moderate to severe limitations for development and recreational uses as determined on a site-specific high-intensity soil survey. Town Code, Section two-thirty-five forty-seven, the requirements are set as follows. Site capacity worksheet, the applicant shall also submit a completed site capacity worksheet with any application for land subdivision to the Town of Aranacoit Planning Board. Said worksheet shall be made available at the Town of Aranacoit Director of Planning and Zoning Office. Although not conclusive, it should be noted that the Monroe County Soil Survey shows about half the site at one-sixty Densmore to be ATF three or arc port Dunkirk and Colony soils, twenty to sixty percent slopes. These are principally in the Aranacoit Creek and Aranacoit Bay drainage areas. Limitations to all uses of this mapping unit are severe. The USDA Soil Survey Mapping Program shows the site to be approximately forty-two percent ATF three soils. Any ATF three soils adjacent to any thirty percent slopes would constitute a transition zone, and as such would become part of the steep slope EPOD, and must be included in the calculations on the site capacity worksheet. On the twentieth day of December two thousand and six, Honorable Evelyn Freze, Justice Supreme Court issued a decision in Palado versus Town of Aranacoit Planning Board-
Evelyn Frezy.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Evelyn Frezy. Justice Supreme Court issued a decision in Palado versus Town of Aranacoit Planning Board on the very issue of site capacity worksheet in the transition zone. The court ruled a transition zone is by definition contained in two-thirty-five fifty-two, included in an environmental protection overlay district if it contains soil classes as determined by a site-specific high-intensity soil survey that indicates moderate to severe limitations for development and recreational uses. The court clearly stated the applicant must perform a site-specific high-intensity soil survey, and if the results meet with the definition contained in two-thirty-five fifty-two, then the transition zone is to be included in the site capacity worksheet. Applicant's letter of intent dated March sixth, two thousand and fifteen states, "The site capacity worksheet for the property indicates that thirty-eight lots would be allowed. However, both the letter of intent and the instrument survey map fail to provide proper documentation to support the thirty-eight, thirty-eight lot claim. The application purports the variance for density is substantial. Just how substantial is pure speculation and arbitrary? Once the applicant performs a site-specific high-intensity soil survey and determines the truth, submits complete substantiated data in the site capacity worksheet, provides an instrument survey map accurately showing all the EPODs, provides a letter of intent based on facts not speculation, then the zoning board will be better able to make a rational and informed decision as to the actual magnitude of the density variance requested and the validity of the vague requests made thus far. The board must disapprove the site capacity worksheet as submitted. Do not be surprised if the density calculation nears twenty-six lots. It should be noted that previous applications submitted by this applicant for review in December two thousand and fourteen was incomplete and did not comply with Town Code. It referenced some imaginary allowable lot number without submitting the required site capacity worksheet, the application was invalid. Letter of intent, the letter of intent is required to clearly identify each requested area variance. The letter of intent lists only two variances, number one, density from thirty-eight to fifty-four, and number two, side setback with zero setbacks between units. But in reality, the sketch references a proposed, proposed area variance and minimum lot size from ninety-six hundred square feet to two thousand four hundred and fifty square feet, an area variance for lot width from eighty feet to twenty feet, an area variance for rear setback from thirty feet to twenty feet, an area variance for lot coverage from twenty-five to thirty-six percent. The board is left to imagine and speculate if there's a request for variances of lot width, rear setback, and lot coverage and lot size. Since the requirement to clearly identify each variance in the letter of intent is not satisfied, the application is incomplete and cannot be acted upon, approved, or referred to another board. The application is in reality a request for over three hundred area variances. Instrument survey map requirement, the requirements for variance application include an instrument survey map showing all proposed structures and their dimensions. It must also show lot dimensions and areas, it must depict proposed setbacks. It is a requirement to accurately depict all EPODs, including the full areas of all steep slopes. The Land Tech sketch does not depict the dimensions for the proposed structures as required, it does not depict the proposed fifty-four lots of the subdivision, it does not quantify the proposed lot coverage of any proposed lot, and it does not depict the proposed setbacks as required. There is a note stating the minimum lot area requested is two thousand four hundred and fifty square feet, yet there is no depiction of any lot of that size. The board must guesses to any and all lot locations, dimensions, areas, and variances required for each lot. I am sure a more complete application will result in more questions, however, as it stands, this project cannot go forward with all the outstanding issues with the application. The five factors for area variance, number one, neighborhood character. The letter of intent only partially analyzed this issue. The visual impacts may or may not be neutral, however, Aranacoit has no shortage of problems associated with commercial rental projects. That issue will be brought forth in documented detail if the incomplete application is brought into compliance. Number two, alternative solutions. The applicant references marketing the property for decades but provides no documentation to support the claim. The New York Court of Appeals has been clear on this issue since December thirtieth, nineteen-fifty-nine, in Forrest versus the zoning board of Aranacoit. On the issue of return on investment, the state's highest court was clear that documented evidence is needed and that conclusory statements as a matter of law are insufficient. In fact, the paper trail on that property fully discredits the applicant's statement on this issue. The property was marketed at multiples of the assessed value. The recent listing price of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars included three parcels and a residence. Again, the owner's asking price was at multiples of the assessed value. Number three, substantial. Applicant's statements on this issue have no credibility because the application is incomplete and does not comply with either Town Code or the decision of the Supreme Court of New York. The analysis is based on numbers that were not calculated in accordance with Town Code. Number four, physical environmental conditions. The applicant's statements on this issue disregard the laws of the town. The applicant has not bothered to locate the highly sensitive and severe soils contained in the ATF three areas on the site. Without mapping these areas, the applicant's statements are fully speculative. Number five, self-created. The applicant claims Mr. Bettinger was unable to obtain any return on his investment on this property. The applicant seems to conveniently forgotten to reference the offer from the East Aranacoit School District for an amount in excess of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The truth is, the entire failure to realize a return falls totally on the shoulders of Mr. Bettinger. As described above, the law is clear, the documentation is required to support claims, and the applicant has provided none. Everything is speculative until the applicant completes an application and submits a site capacity worksheet, done in accordance with the Town Code and case law. This application would set a new precedent in our town, large variances with no lot lines, building in the buffer EPOD, and bringing commercial apartments in an R1 neighborhood. Please uphold our Town Code and disapprove the site capacity worksheet for the protection of our neighborhood. Thank you.
All right, this is, this is not a performance, and I'm gonna, I'm not going to say it again. There's to be no comments from the audience. If you want to comment by either verbally or otherwise, you can get in line and come to the podium. If there's going to be any more of that, we'll have people step outside, and then they can come in one at a time and talk. I'm not putting up with any more of that tonight. Thank you. Name and address, please, sir?
My name is Sam Masrosamoni, I live at two-ninety-eight Waller Road for fifty-one year. I'm against for this project. Believe me, it's got to be a traffic addition, fresh the value of the house. The traffic they're going to be between the school, the bus, as you see every morning, I live in four houses down to Densmore. The traffic we have with the school bus, in the morning and the afternoon, a lot of people walking, it's got to be a lot of traffic walking, eh, when this, this parliament get out. So the only thing you're going to get out, the fresh street you're going to be Waller Road, so you're familiar with it. So Waller Road, they got every street, no sidewalk, no guard, nothing. People walking during the winter time, in the dark, in the middle of the street, very danger, because I drive myself from Densmore to Culver Road all the time, most of the time, everywhere, really messy. They clean the sidewalk on the side, my side between Densmore to the middle of the street is getting curve like this, I never see it on the quite. Street with a curve in the middle, like this, you're familiar. Plus, they have a one tree right in the middle, their road, get a garbage truck one time, a brick, a branch, a monster killing itself, and never take care. Anyway, I wish this, you ladies and gentlemen, to consider this project, everything else, because I'm against, a lot of the other people don't like to. Thank you.
You're welcome. Next.
My name is Madeline Guera, I live at one-seven-one Kennedy Circle. I have a custom-built home worth over a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. I didn't buy that home to have apartments next to me. I've lived there since the beginning of that area on Kennedy Circle, over forty-five years. Now, when you say about traffic, I just want you to know, just two months ago, trying to come out of Kennedy Circle, one of the people dropping off their children off to school, doesn't see my car halfway in the road, and comes around and smashes my car for eight thousand five hundred dollars, because there's a hill there, and you cannot see cars coming up. There's cars, they never knew where Densmore Circle was. Now you get them from the expressway, they come down there to avoid the lights on Culver Road. They come down there to avoid the lights on Culver Road. They take the shortcut so they don't have to stop for the signal lights. Isn't that wonderful? You have schoolchildren there. It's supposed to be 25 miles an hour. I have news for you. If you were around there, it's not 25. It's a mess. It's a mess. And I, around the corner, you have the legacy. Beyond that, you have apartments. How many apartments do we need? Where are these people coming from to go into these apartments? If they turn around and said that they don't have room for private homes on that land, then they shouldn't have bought the property. It's an R1 restricted, and it should remain that way. How would you like it in your backyard? I don't like it in mine. It's R1, and I want it to stay that way. And if they can put private homes there, they had no business buying that property.
Next?
My name is Walter Jesterzen, and I live at 171 Kennedy Circle. And I'm here for one thing. We did not get enough information on the planning board. We're just told verbally here, and all the people are seeing what's going to happen. Now, this idea of trying to build as many units as possible so they could make more money? I don't think so. Twenty, who would want a house with just 20 feet? Hey, I'm thinking of the elderly people. You know, I'm 93 years old. I like to move around. And if I had a high chair or a go-kart...
Sir, if you'd address your comments to the board, please.
Pardon?
Please address your comments to the board, not to the audience.
Yes, I thought maybe the people didn't hear me, and I'm...
Well, they'll hear you a lot better if you speak into the microphone.
All right. Well, now you know. The elderly people don't want to be cooped up. 20 feet? This is ridiculous. Why, if you're in a wheelchair, do you think you can move around in a 20-foot area? And another thing, there's a lot of people, I think in the study, there's a lot of small homes here. So this idea of concentrating to make the biggest profit out of that area, that's because they're thinking of the money. Well, I think that we should think of the people that are going to move into this town because they're going to be paying the taxes here. And as far as reducing the size and so forth, something you've got to consider: the children across the street that go to that school. It is really terrible. You have, in other words, if you're going to put that many units in, you would have to extend the roadway. And I think that right now, they're squeezed so much, there's no reason that we should do that. Just let him make smaller, smaller, well, regular size to pass the code, units. That's enough. Keep it within the, contain it into what the town allows, and no variation. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
John Kaufman, 249 Hoffman Road. I'm Secretary of Aronacoit Land Use Coalition, a group dedicated to getting wise development in our town. The purpose of the site-capacity worksheet was to reduce development density in environmentally sensitive parcels. ILUC was instrumental in the incorporation of the site-capacity worksheet into the town code. This application asks for a radical increase in the number of units allowed by the SCW, Site-Capacity Worksheet. ILUC is very much opposed to any increase in the number of units above that allowed by the SCW. We recommend that your board deny the request for an increased number of units. Second point: The application asserts that the area of this parcel is 12.69 acres, while the Town Assessor's Office and Monroe County Pictometry indicate that the parcel is only 11.5. Could the applicant address this discrepancy? As Ms. Evershed pointed out previously, some of these areas of the EPods look suspect to me, and I think they should be submitted over the seal of a professional engineer. Clustering should be required, but only 38 units should be allowed in the cluster. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name is John Creino. I reside at 85 Kennedy Circle. 160 Denzmore Road is Zone R1 residential, single families. Per the Development Site-Capacity Worksheet, which isn't complete, he could only build 38 homes. This developer is proposing seven apartment buildings, 54 units, with zero lot lines, being partially built an EPod with detention pond. This proposes a magnitude of variance that could, our asking for is unprecedented size. Nowhere else in our town has this ever been done. Of course, this developer has the right to ask for variance for whatever he wants, to put it up to the town to uphold our code and law, to put a place to protect the environment of residents. And in closing, I'd just like to say, I've been in this property 29 years, okay? I put a lot of work in that house. My house backs right up to those woods. Mr. Bettinger could say what he wants and say. I'm in a professional business. I've had people all around the country fly around. Their property, where we live, you can get a million dollars anywhere in Boston or anywhere else. Alls I'm saying is, when I bought that property, it was Zone R1. That's why I would have stayed. If I knew it was going to be zoned a different thing, I would have got out of Aronacoit a long time ago. Secondly, love all the seniors, but you know what? You keep pushing this, you'll never have a young community people come in and build houses and look at this community. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Next?
Good evening. I'm Michelle Donahue. I live at 105 Kennedy Circle. I'm glad that the board is considering the variance that this developer is trying to put forth, which is for density and for setback. You know, the board and the zones exist to help protect us, the residents. This is an R1 district, and that is all that should be in the district is R1. Okay? So, you know, kind of related to those five statutory factors, related to area variances: neighborhood character. Rentals change the character of a neighborhood. There is no doubt in that. The traffic, safety concerns. There are enough apartments and rentals in our immediate neighborhood. We do not need any more. In terms of alternative solutions, benefit from land can be gained from development that will not require a variance. There is, you know, to stay within the rules of R1, there are reasonable return does not equal a maximal return. I think that's important to consider. You know, that was upheld by Everhead and Johnson. In terms of substantial, this is, this development as put forth will be a huge change. It will affect the health, the safety, and the welfare of the entire neighborhood and should be seriously considered. With the proposed variances and increased density above the limit, it's not allowed within that R1, and that needs to be considered. You know, in regard to Mrs. Evershed's comment, I'm not going to repeat that, but really, we're looking at variances for minimal lot lines. We're looking for variances for lot width. We're looking for variances for rear setbacks, and we're looking for variance for lot coverage. That's a lot more than the two area variances that were proposed originally, totaling over 300. And that also should be considered. In terms of environmental conditions, the plan submitted was incomplete. In terms of the survey, it doesn't show all the proposed structures. It doesn't even show the lot lines. Okay? If I'm a teacher, if a student submits me incomplete work, I can't assess that. So I find it hard that the board can judge something that's incomplete and make a good decision. As talked of before, you know, the setbacks aren't there, the lot coverage isn't there. You're guessing. You're guessing at all this information because it wasn't given to you, and you can't make good decisions if you don't have accurate information. In terms of this, self-created is that last feature that we look at. You know, people are responsible when they purchase land to know what type of land this is, and this has clearly been an R1. It's not a hardship because they are charged with the knowledge of zoning ordinance provisions that would create any problems. So, you know, you can acquire land zone for residential and then try and change it later with a variance. So in closing, I just want to thank you for giving us all the opportunity to express our concerns, and I just wanted to summarize, as recent as March 20 of 2015 in Tonawanda, they helped held that substantial variances in residential areas do not allow for apartment, self-created developments that were detrimental to the neighborhood. So thank you.
Thank you. Next?
Good evening. My name is Karen Capen. I live at 50 Denzmore Road, which is one of the houses that's near Norton Street, of which I spend every morning of my life trying to get out of my driveway and then turn onto Norton Street, and I have a very hard time because of the traffic and the buses. And my biggest problem with this whole thing is that how much more is this neighborhood supposed to absorb? First, you started with the legacy, which I came here to protest that because it was a known fact that Kodak dumped chemicals on that, on all that land, and it really shouldn't have been touched, and it was. And I don't know how far back it went, but I'm probably sure there's some chemicals on this property, too. It's just, we can't, we can't deal with any more of this on that road, and I don't think we should have to. Our taxes certainly have not gone down because of anything that's been put up: the school, the legacy, the apartments down the street. I think we've had to deal with enough. We need to keep this property green and keep it like it is. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Rose Marie Carroll, and I live at 264 Waller Road. I moved into Aronacoit in 2008. Before I moved, I was driving around the neighborhood to see what kind of a neighborhood it was, and I saw that there were a lot of single-family homes with a lot of children, people walking their dogs, and I chose to move into this area. I would hope that you oppose this proposition that they have to build these apartments or build these homes or whatever they want to build to rent because there is a lot of traffic in the area already from the school, and putting these in will cause a lot more traffic, a lot more congestion, and it will no longer be a nice neighborhood. Thank you, and have a good evening.
Thank you. You, too.
Good evening. Name is Greg Devlin, 135 Carroll Drive, and I'd like to talk about a couple of these things, but in more generalities and such. So I listened to all this. I wonder about the future impact to start with. And we're talking about six-unit, six-unit buildings. In other words, nine buildings with six units. I agree that it is nothing but a veiled comment for an apartment complex. That's all it really is. And that's not what the code goes for. They talked about rentals of $1,200 to $1,500 per month, and they talk about using only 1.5 acres for these. And if this is successful, I can just see how we'll come back in the future, and they're going to want to go use some more of this green space to put up more units. Once you, once you set the precedent, they're going to have more argument to go ahead and say for this. But more importantly, when I look at all of this and I see everything's been said and such like that, I wonder, why do we have codes? Why do we have regulations? You know, we have R1 because, and that's what people moved into. People moved into an R1 district. They did not expect to have their homes challenged and devalued because you changed the code after they've moved in. When you have someone buy a piece of land and then come forth and say, "Well, now you've got to accommodate me," and change the code, that's wrong. I remember you, that's what Legacy tried over on Titus Avenue. They bought the property, then they came and said, "You've got to change the code so we can put up what we want to put up." We have R1, we, people move into a town, they move into a neighborhood because of what they have there. They move into it to go ahead and maintain property values because of the value of the neighborhood, because of the atmosphere of the neighborhood and of the town. We don't want to go ahead and degrade that. We should not degrade that. If you, in fact, allow the variance and go from R1 and change, change the zoning, you're going to set a precedent. Legacy, I remind you, they removed the proposal. It was never put down. They can come back and repropose it. If you set the precedent of allowing this, that will probably happen, and it'll be harder to go ahead and stop. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else wish to speak in opposition to the application? Is there anyone who wants to come up and talk to us about it? Does the applicant wish to address any of the points bearing in mind what I said at the outset?
Mr. Chairman, I think at this point, what we would request is that you keep the hearing open and refer the matter to the planning board for the lead agency designation so we can move forward. You know, we did not make our full presentation, go through all the factors and all that, and I don't think you want me to do that tonight, so I won't. But that's what we would request.
Okay. Thank you. All right. The board will be in recess for 10 minutes until 8:55. Still here with respect to 1 Medley Center Parkway. He left, and I'm well aware that everybody's still here for 160 Denzmore Road. Okay. The, with respect to the application for a special use permit at 462 Crossfield Road, this is a type-two action for seeker purposes. Does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this matter?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move that we approve this application for the property at 462 Crossfield with the following findings. First of all, as far as a change to the neighborhood is concerned, I believe that the applicant has done, Yeoman's job as far as researching this whole thing is displayed great sensitivity to the needs of the, of the immediate neighbors and really seems to know what she's doing, but I'll get back to the possible change in just, in just a minute. There's no alternative to this. You either have chickens or you don't.
Before we go further, what are the criteria for the special use permit as opposed to the variance? Because you're reciting factors for variance.
Yeah, there, there aren't necessarily enumerated factors in the same way. It's just that it's, it's, as you said before, it's deemed, the use is deemed appropriate for the area. It's just if there are any, you know, particular considerations or conditions that should be imposed.
So, if I get off page, you'll let me know.
Sure.
Okay. The substantiality of the quest is, is also pretty minimal because, first of all, we're not talking about a big structure. We're not talking about a large, large herd of hens. We're talking about four, and so the, it's not really not a substantial request. Any effect on the physical or environmental conditions could be, but I believe that she has convinced me that she, she has the knowledge and the will to not let that happen because she knows what she's doing. And I also think that the, this motion will carry a condition where the chickens are going to have to be certified healthy by a professional veterinarian. I was going to say chicken doctor, but that didn't look. Is this situation self-created? Of course it is, but she has good motives. She's interested in the, in the genuine greenness of the whole thing, and she wants to get back to the, to the healthier, natural stuff, and I think that's all, that's all admirable. But I do think, though, that because it's not part of our normal code, I do, we'd like to put the condition on this motion that the, that it be reviewed after one year, right here, to assure that she's doing what she says, that the chickens are being well taken care of, and that the neighbors do not have a further concern or whatever. So, we, we keep in touch, so to speak. This is not just an open-ended thing. That's the motion.
I'll second it. And did you want to add a condition that the location of the coop would be in a spot that would accommodate the requests that were made in the letter from?
Actually, you know, I didn't think it was necessary, only because I, I believe it would happen anyway. She doesn't want to bother anybody.
Okay. I just wasn't sure, because that had come up during the discussion, and so I wasn't sure.
Can I add, one, one condition I hadn't been talking about is, unfortunately, I grew up with hundreds of chickens, being a good southern bar that I am, for rodent control that she had to, which hasn't been talked about in her letter, inactive rodent control, however environment safe she wants to do, because chicken and feed do attract rodents, mice, et cetera. That's just a, it goes hand in hand with each other.
So, what would the condition be that you want to add?
That, that she adds rodent control to her, to her, to her, to her plan.
Oh, okay.
To, right.
I think in the past, the, a lot of the coops are made with a, a bottom part that it does have a barrier for rodents, like a tin bottom to them, and I do also know that some of the past applicants have talked about putting the feed in certain containers that cannot be broken into, or they're put, put in the feed, is put into the garage, secure, but yeah.
I, I, I'm okay with demonstrating.
A rodent control policy.
I can't think of the word.
I'll put down rodent control measures to be incorporated.
Measures. There you go. That's the word.
All right. I'm from the South, so I couldn't, measures has too many syllables, syllables in it.
Okay. Is that okay with you?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion or questions or comments from the board? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries, four votes in favor, one against, no abstentions. Two members of the board are absent. Next item on the agenda is 135 Point Pleasant Road. This is also a special use permit, which is a type-two action for seeker purposes. Does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this application?
I'll, I'll jump on on this one. 135 Point Pleasant Road, I believe we could approve the applicant. I would like to make it subject to no, no tractor-trailer trucks to be allowed, and limit to the types of trucks that he had discussed, which were flatbed truck, the one chip truck, and the chipper machine, and his pickup truck, and a trailer, utility trailer, but no tractor-trailers, I guess, is the.
So, by landscape vehicles only?
Landscape vehicles only, no semis. And that he did mention that he was going to trim the parcel with some shrubbery and, and make it look aesthetically pleasing. I believe it will not really change the character of the neighborhood because it is a commercial lot. However, it is, sits in the middle of some nice homes. However, the lot has been empty, and I believe the way he's going to set it up, it'll make it look nice. So, I don't think it's going to hurt the character of the neighborhood. Alternatives, and we've looked at other alternatives, I think this is a good alternative. I don't think it's a substantial request. It will not affect the physical or environmental conditions, and it is a self-created issue because he purchased that lot to do this with, but I believe it's not substantial enough to deny, so I believe we should approve it.
It's a, it's an unlisted action, too, so you guys are going to have to do seeker on that.
Suggestion there, he, the applicant was okay with a 6:00 PM cutoff time in the evening. Can we live with something like that?
Did you want to second it with that?
Yeah, I'll second it so far. I'm sorry. So, and you want to add the condition that no vehicle traffic between 6:00 PM and?
6:00 AM.
6:00 AM?
Yeah.
Okay. I think that protects the residents a little better. Any other questions, comments, or suggestions?
One, one other thing, no, I think I'm going to pass on it.
All right. All those in favor, say aye.
So, just you have to do the seeker motion first, because it is unlisted.
Oh, okay.
You have to issue a negative declaration.
All right. So, I'll make a motion that we issue a negative declaration. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No members opposed. Any abstentions? We have two members absent, five votes in favor, so that passes. On the motion itself, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, five votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions. Two members of the board remain absent. The next item is the application pertaining to 160 Denzmore Road. I would make a motion that we refer this matter to the planning board as lead agency for seeker and other review of the application and determinations as they deem to be appropriate at this point. A second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, five votes in favor. Two members of the board remain absent. No opposed, no abstentions. Last item to be considered by the board tonight pertains to the application relating to 1 Medley Center Parkway. This is a type-two action for seeker purposes. Does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this application?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve this signage as proposed for the following, well, it's not a.
This is an area variance.
Oh, I can.
The factors do apply to this.
All right. I'll move ahead then. No real change to the character of the neighborhood. First of all, they're temporary, anyway, hopefully. Secondly, there are no alternatives, no reasonable alternatives to this idea of getting some signs up in the mall, I should say, at, at that one store. It's not a huge request, just to get a couple of signs up there, and it may have a very positive effect on the town. There would be no change in the physical or environmental conditions, it's just signage, and is it self-created? Not necessarily, because the place has been vacant and it's getting in worse shape by the minute, so the better we, the sooner we get this, the better, and I, I think it's a good idea to support this. I guess you could argue it's self-created, but it's, it's in the interest of business and the town.
I'd second that.
Okay. Just about to do that myself, but that's all right.
Jump right in there. I'm excited about this one.
That's fine. There you go. All right. Any other questions or comments from the board? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, five votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions. Two members of the board remain absent, and that concludes the items on our agenda for this evening, so we are adjourned. Thank you there, Mr. Chairman.
My pleasure.
Good evening.